The meeting of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the city of Lago Vista. We're starting our meeting at 6:08 PM. We have a quorum here. Let me go ahead and call a roll. Do we have Salima Harbison?
Here.
Mandy Carter?
Here.
And Deanna Roberts?
Here.
And Karen Van Ness is here, so we've got a quorum of four. Okay, first order of business into our only action item is approving our minutes. So you guys, Mandy sent out the minutes for both August and September. Hopefully you guys had a chance to peruse them. We'll go ahead and get them approved, and then before you and I leave, I made a note to myself for us to sign them, yeah. So, and I'll drop them off for Sandra tomorrow, Friday. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes for August and September?
Motion to approve.
Salima's motioned. Can I get a second? Deanna's second? Great, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. The minutes are approved. Okay. All right, let's move on to our discussion items. Chris Mobley will give us his Parks and Recreation update.
Did you see this afternoon I sent you, I know you liked the copy of it.
Yep, and I forwarded that to Mandy too, so she's got it.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you know, here's the agendas, you guys, if you want. Sorry, I was pointing out.
Kind of short, and it seems like we didn't do anything, but we're still doing everything else that we're doing. I think council has directed me to be more specific, or more just on the bigger line. My report used to be met with this person, and I think that we want just more of the gist. So here's the gist. We obtained three bids to resurface and reorientate the pickleball courts. Our low bid was $12,500. The second bid was 13, and we got another one, and it was 19. So council allotted $15,000. Of that $15,000, $13,000 was to resurface and reorient the courts, and then $2,000 was to put another net up to keep the golf balls from blind in on the pickleball people. So unfortunately, all the companies, they are so, construction is so, so busy, that the soonest they're going to be able to get out to us is three to four months, but we at least got in line. So, and the interesting thing about it is, one of the companies I got a bid for to do this in December of 2020, and the bid was $5,500.
Oh, wow.
The next, the bid went from $5,500 to $12,500.
Oh, my gosh.
And, and I'll get to you when I get to you. I thought I was really kind of fudging a little bit, asking for 15 to get some other things. I've got no fudging at all, so. Chris Williams and I, newly promoted park maintenance supervisor, went on a, we toured our parks and developed a five-month maintenance plan. But why five months? Well, growing seeds is about seven months, and for seven months, all we do is cut grass. Cut grass, cut grass, cut grass. And then when we stop cutting grass, there's some things that need to get done. So we developed a five-month plan with that. Diane was gracious enough to listen to the Gilligan's Hour three-hour tour yesterday.
I requested that tour. I took upon it.
And so we were able to let her know that we realized things need to get done, and this is the time that we can do that. And so it was very, I think, very educational for her, and we've got that plan. When I originally made the plan, I made it for Chris and I to understand. So when I can explain a little bit more, so you'll know what our lingo is. Because Diane goes, "What are you trying to do here?" Well, you know, this is what we're trying to do here. I'd like to share that, so you guys can see what we've got going on. One of the things that Diane, was good for her, is she saw the piece of property Karen that we're talking about, and had some of the same reactions that you did, like, wow, this is some really, really good potential back there, so. The masonry wall was installed at dawn point. Some people will say yes, and the yay, and some people will not, but it's installed, it looks nice.
I think it looks good.
I think it looks really nice.
We're still waiting on relocating the electrical box to the back of the wall. The electric guy will be out Tuesday to finish it up, and then the project's done. But I think the wall came out very nice. I was really, and it seemed like it was a lot of money when it was $7,900 to do it, but they were out there six full days.
Yeah.
Putting it together.
A lot of detail work.
They did a really good job, I think, so. And closed out, oh, yeah, and, yeah. Keep Lago Vista Beautiful, they're through. They put the rest of the River Rock in and some plants behind it, and now they just said, just be patient, because all those are going to grow and get bigger and take up more space. So particularly happy with the project. We started, we started a long time back, just the planning of it, and then, but I think it's looking really nice. I'm going to get with Tracy and see if there's something specific that she wants to do to celebrate that we're done with it. We closed out the summer pool operations. I just put this in there, we paid the YMCA $32,000 for operating the pool this year. So that was well within the budget that we had. We had $65,000 in the budget, and we spent 32 of it. And we're developing a list of winter projects, and we're also having a pool company come check on the equipment and system on a monthly basis. What we ran into this time is we started checking things late, real late, and there were things totally messed up. So we're, I'm going to have somebody just check it monthly for us, check all the systems and all the equipment to make sure that when we're ready to open up, we can open up, so.
Did they fix the splash pad, or is that one of the winter projects?
That was...
Or that part of the pool?
I had submitted to fix that, and it wasn't, it didn't get passed to our city management to fix it. From what I understand, it's been there for 20 years. It's been down for 10. Josh had asked me to look into seeing what it would cost to fix. You're talking $30,000 to $35,000 now, because the system that we built, that's not what they use now. I have to treat the water now, so I would have to totally redo the system there. If you've been out there, or I'd like for you to, if you're in there, take a look at it. It's a real pretty piece, it's just not very functional at all. It's sitting up in there, and the water's going to come out, and it's going to be a great place for the kids to be, not a place for an adult to sit, to watch and or supervise. And it was like, what were you thinking here type deal, but, you know, because splash pads are usually for the younger ones, so you're going to have the younger ones up there, and there's no benches, there's no seating, there's no place for parents to sit and to watch them. Maybe that's why it got to the place that it got to. But if we're interested in doing that again, again, that was $35,000 a year and a half ago. Who knows what that would be these days?
Yeah, it was pretty cool. We used to go there when my son was younger.
Where did you sit when you were there?
I'd be in there with him. I mean, with my son, you had to play with him, so it was like going in and waiting for the bucket of water to hit your head. That was always fun, but, yeah, no. But I know what you're saying, yeah, because all the tables and chairs, or even the shaded pavilions, aren't really right there where you'd want to be with your kids, so.
But it's something, if we decide that we'd like to add that to our inventory, back into our inventory, you just know there's just, there'll be a cost to that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, good. All right, awesome. Yeah, and I mean, Chris's promotion is well deserved. He's worked just immensely, a huge amount, out at Sunset Park, and now just all the maintenance and mowing he does, let alone. And then he jumped on the Dawn Circle property and started clearing that out and mowing. He and Chris were in there clearing out where there's some nice cobs of trees and stuff.
Me and Chris and Katie, our staff, and it was fun. Sometimes you got to do what you got to do to get things done, and you only have two full-time people, so. But hopefully you'll see some things happening within the next month. Our first project is actually to take care of the property between the library and City Hall. Meredith, that's where she has her tree lighting, her tree lighting event. So we want to clear a little bit more. I don't know if y'all went last year, but very successful. A lot of kids were back there. We want to clear a little bit more of that back there, so we can use more of that. So that'll be our, that'll be the first one we're getting to. And once I get this in some kind of language, if you guys will understand what I'm talking about, I'll send a copy up to you, Karen, and you can kind of see, or make suggestions about, hey, have you thought about this? Or, we went to every park and had a pretty good list of things that we're trying to get done in winter projects.
Great. Okay, good. Good. And how, in terms of Sunset Park, so bathroom, you know, the stuff that's been approved, right? Is that still?
We're still looking at January for the restroom, and February for the playground. Like I said, everything was so far out, because, but we're in line, we're good.
That's right.
And it'll be, should be good and ready for our baseball and softball and soccer and everything for next season, you know.
Great.
Sounds like, the air conditioner came on really strong.
The concrete's wet. Any questions for Chris on his update?
If you'd like to take the tour that Diane did, just let Chris and I know. Would, you know, it was a couple hours, because we got out, and we're dodging the rain a little bit, but, you know.
Tell me I asked too many questions. I think it was closer to three hours.
She asked a lot of questions, but I would rather, you know, when I start to have advocates for this, and the people can, they can say, well, what do you know about that? Well, I actually went on a tour, and I know these things and all that. And I think it gave Diane a good idea of the enormity of the task that we have when you start pointing out. And that didn't, the tour didn't include the things we have to do at the pool, or the things that we have to do at the airport also.
Right, no airport, no pool, no, no trail, you know, I didn't get to see the trails that are all up on the airport side. And that's like one of our more extensive, as I understand it, areas of trails. But, yeah, I had no idea, quite literally, how much two and a half people are expected to do. No idea. It's huge. It's, how many times did I say ridiculous? It's like ridiculous. You've got to have more money to have more people, but it's just, I was literally dumbfounded at the expectation. It's beyond accomplishing. It's really beyond accomplishing, not with all the stuff we talk about trying to do to better our community here. It's impossible with this kind of budget and that number of people. So I don't know what we all have to do to get some advocates on the city council, to get past the city manager, to, you know, find a bucket that has some flexible money. I mean, taking the $20,000 for the statue, I mean, for the sculpture. That's huge, for what Chris's budget is. That's huge. Now, there's got to be some, not got to be, but cross my fingers and toes, that there's some kind of way. I mean, I know the auditors had to come out of there, but there's, surely there's some other way for some flexibility with a different bucket of monies that the city has. Or, I know there's so much we can do for getting contributions.
Can the contribution money go to help pay for some of the upkeep of the parks?
Well, doesn't necessarily have to be the upkeep, but the...
Because we're talking about another bucket, so our other bucket seems to be this fundraising and these...
That's one of the buckets, hopefully not the other bucket, but there's more than one.
More than the city bucket of money, yeah. No, I think absolutely we'll get to...
I was just curious if that was even a possibility, or if it just had to go...
About parks upkeep?
Well, it doesn't have to be in the upkeep category.
But it'd be more that, the contributions help fund the amenities we want to add to the parks, and then that frees up money.
Making something happen, making something happen.
Bring the money around.
Yeah, I see.
But I do appreciate you coming out.
It was an eye-opening experience.
Well, good.
I recommend it for everybody.
Yeah, go ahead, Shalane.
I might offer two things, one suggestion and one comment. As Chris just mentioned, it might be worth the time to speak with some of the folks on the Friends of the Library, or who are a part of the Friends of the Library, just to see if they might have, I don't know, some tips and tricks, because I know they seem to raise a fairly decent amount of money that the library then gets to use. I don't know if there's strings to what they can or can't use that money that's raised for, or if they have, you know, kind of free rein on what they can spend on.
Maybe both.
But maybe, maybe both. But Jan, I'm not sure who the lead person is there, but Jan at the library surely could put somebody in contact with them.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, good idea.
So that's a suggestion. And then my comment is, if you have not ever gone on a tour of the parks with Chris, I did that back in February, I guess, and before the big storm. And it was really enlightening, just to get an idea of all of the things that technically fall under Chris's purview, things that I just suspected, were even his responsibility. So if you haven't done a tour of the parks with Chris, I highly recommend it. It really was very educational, I enjoyed it a whole lot.
Sounds good. Well, maybe we can get, maybe you can suggest to whoever gets elected, our new city council members? Maybe encourage them to go on that tour, so they're aware. And like you said, hopefully they're more open to and supportive of, yeah, we do need to add to the parks and the other amenities we have citywide.
We need to find some of that flex money, because they, it was just such a, such a wop to take $20,000 out. That's like more than half of what we had left, and for them to try to function. They're already trying to function with two and a half. I say two and a half, because as Chris explained to me, Adam, 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 for the months of the pool operation, he's kind of, you know...
Certified pool operator.
He has to divide himself, so the majority is the pool, so that's why I say two and a half. And, and the other thing that I think I said multiple times is, not for them to do, but it's like, I could see this is missing, is to get in front of the people, of the community, what is out there, and what, where we need their help, and that we need their involvement. That's just so important, that's, so often we see that people can get passionate and really involved when it touches them, whether it touches them negatively or touches them positively. And in order to see that, they need to see, you know? And it's kind of beholden, like so many things in a government or an organization, it's kind of beholden on the organization to be more proactive, to get the message out there, that we need you. And we need them to make an impression on the city council. Because otherwise, and what I've seen from the city council so far, nothing against you, Shalane, that at all, we're right there together on all these things, is that it gets shuffled to the side so easily, because, yeah, it's not a money generating, it's going to actually take more money out of our pockets initially than it's going to, we're going to see any kind of bloom from it. But it's really imperative, and the quality of living and what we have going on, what we hope to see, I think, that could be wrong too, with regard to Lago Vista's growth, because Lago Vista's growth is going to slap us all in the face in like less than five years. Less than five years. And we need to have these amenities and these quality of life in the communities, and not just everything spilling over the edge of the road kind of a thing. You know, one of the things, and one of the areas that I, in this new area that you guys saw, that I saw, because when, Deanna, when we went to go look at it, and how we kind of thought it was more to the right side of it, but it actually goes all the way butts up against basically those garage buildings, which is kind of unbelievable, and I was like, but still, a lot more land. And, and I was like, okay, but we kind of need, I would like to see like some kind of little hedge border, like Holly, and Evergreen is something that is not necessarily just pretty, but, you know, dogs don't like to run through Holly and stuff. And Chris was like, well, why do we need it? And I just think it gives perspective, it gives that this is, that this is pretty, this is special, you know? Not just something where the edge of the road runs up on top of it, you know, and the grass runs over the edge, and, you know, things like that. It gives us a little border to set it aside, and that's applicable to everything else too. I kind of gave, I gave an example, I'm talking too much, so somebody stop me. I gave the example of a condition, a condition in New York, many, many years ago, back when, in our first little house, until it's like early 2000s, whoever was the mayor of New York. And New York was inundated with their crime, crime numbers. It was just overwhelming. And one of the things that he did, and I apologize, I can't remember his name, he did is because in the subways, which transportation, subways is a big thing apparently in New York, I've never been there, but in the subways, it was, the subways were overwhelmed with dirt and trash and graffiti everywhere. And so his like starting point, it was like a tipping point, the theory of the tipping point for so many things, is that everybody was going full force into cleaning up the subways, and then preventing not one speck of trash, not one speck of graffiti. If graffiti appeared, somebody was right there to take it away, straight away. The premise was, and it worked, they, it fell by half within less than two years, I think the statistics said, that if an area shows that you care about it, people will treat it like you care, like they care about it. They'll treat it with care, and it becomes pervasive, and you kind of have to nurture that and let it grow. And that's beholden on us as the spokespeople for this particular aspect. It's not money, but it costs money, it costs effort.
Yeah. No, good, great point. Yeah, no, I agree, because like even now, I mean, a lot of lots are getting bought up and built on, but even now, like places where I jog or walk, and traditionally, people just dumped there. Right, even by the road, they don't even try to hide it.
They don't, it's just right there.
Like huge things. Refrigerators.
On Lake Shore, they put a big old sofa, on Lake Shore, there's all kinds of open, nobody cares about land that's been in turmoil. But no, they come and dump this big old sofa right on Lake Shore on the way to my house. I'm like, what?
Yeah, but you're right, having kind of that pride, you know, doing things right, doing things nice. And, I mean, I'm from a software background for much of my career, so I believe in iteration. Like let's, what can we get in, like MVP, right, minimally viable product? What's our minimally viable park, like that Dawn Circle thing? What can we start with? Let's take a phased approach and edge our way in there, and then some of the bigger budget items maybe come later. But if we start getting some traction with some stuff and people start using it, and we get the word out.
That's another point, to make it visible, to make it visible. And to be careful, and one aspect of that is to be careful that we don't like put all our eggs in one basket for a given amount of time, because it needs to be seen by more than one sector of the community. Because otherwise, you're going to say, okay, well, they did that over there, what's happening in my part? You don't want, you kind of want to let, allay those kind of things, because you can't do everything, but there's, you know, kind of a wavering middle of the road to navigate, you know?
Well, I think, and we'll talk about it in item three, because if, as we're all pulling our analyses together on the properties, we might think about, we may have multiple options we want to present for certain properties, but the other way to think about it is, is there's some phasing you might recommend? Like first, maybe we leverage it for this, but later, the ultimate vision of it is much bigger, and might take more money or more time, but let's lay that all out, because then I think we have to sell city council first on that vision, and then, but also to see like, hey, there's some budget-friendly stuff we could be doing to get some things that are really nice and usable for people immediately, like next year, going to, you know, '22, and then fiscal year '23, we can do more and get more momentum that way. And then I also think with the Friends of the Park, the not-for-profit, to me, that's a vehicle for getting the word out. You know, not just asking for donations, but potentially mobilizing people to get involved, to be more vocal about it, and yeah, also volunteers.
Even just this weekend, we just went to the Starry Skies thing, which was like, just not even much, but it got, and people were there and just hanging out, it wasn't like...
The city gave $2,000 towards that though, which really helped, but the insurance was out, it was $400 and something dollars just for the insurance to get 100 people out there. We had a little ticket thing, a little counter, and just going up the path, there was 80, and who knows how many came across the field. So it was, it was a pretty good turnout for just trying, you know, trying to get it together, and none of us knowing how it was going to come out, but...
Yeah, and there wasn't like a whole bunch of plant events, people could just hang, I mean...
Yeah, it was good. I thought, I think it was good.
I know, I'm sorry I missed it, we were up in Mass.
I think we were all here, but Salima and you.
I was out of town.
But most of us were there. Chris was there, Shalane was there. Diane was there.
Good.
De was, yeah, Diane was there, so.
That's awesome.
I just want to make one point of clarification, though. The city didn't give $2,000 for the event. What, the Lago Vista Starry Skies asked the city during the budget cycle if they could add a line item in the city's budget for Lago Vista Starry Skies to have some money to do things like purchase the light meters and...
At startup.
You know, things like that. Similar to how they fund other organizations that ask for funds, like I think the Hill Country Singers, I think is another group that typically, if I'm not mistaken, that asks for funds, things like that. So there are different organizations, city organizations that will sometimes come to the city and put together a letter like, hey, would you be willing to...
And they did the school, they did that little school out on whatever that was. And they gave about the same amount, it was like $2,000, $2,000. Yeah, the nameless school. So.
So, you know, to help with a number of different things, but I think they found out very quickly, to Darcy's point, that that $2,000, just because we didn't expect the insurance to be so expensive, is gone already. So I think next budget cycle, there may be some discussion about, you're spending it on different things, you'll ask people. Just wanted to be part of that.
Yeah, cool.
I had a question. With the Friends of the Parks, could we use that as a vehicle to remind the community that the parks are important? Kind of like Keep Lago Green or something like that? Like I feel like we could use it as a way to remind people when they are voting, or when they are making choices, that they need to make sure that they remember to ask about parks and ask about green spaces. Because I think a lot of times, it gets lost in the importance of shuffling, like on candidate's night. I don't remember ever, ever being asked anything about parks. And so I think that maybe we need to remind people that it's something that's important, because it's one of the number-one things that people mention on the community board. You go through the, you know, dog park, community garden, I mean, it gets mentioned over and over and over and over and over, you know, Dawn Circle, and oh, I wish I had input on that. And it's like, I keep telling people, you can have input, just show up and, you know. But I think it's really important to remind people that during these times, now's the time to ask our candidates, what do you think about parks? Are parks important to you? Is that something that you're even aware of that's important to me, that I want to have green spaces? And maybe it's just something as simple as a slogan, or like a bumper sticker, or something that we could tie in to the LV Friends of the Parks, you know, where we're, you know, at the farmer's market, set up a table, where we're just meeting people and saying, hey, we're the Parks Committee, and we want to keep Lago green, and it's important to us to build playgrounds, and if you're interested, you know, we have meetings at this time, and this is how you donate. And I just think that a lot of times, people come up to me and they're like, I don't even know, where do we get to get involved? And it's like, well, the first thing you need to do is go out and vote for the people that are going to help us achieve our ultimate goals, right? Like that's the very, that's a very, first thing that you can do that's really, really important.
Developing the tagline, just something.
Just a hashtag or a slogan that we can have when we're doing little pictures at the farmer's market.
I just put this on my husband's political page today. I literally, I plugged our committee. I put hashtag preserve green spaces. Yesterday's National Fossil Day, I posted it.
Yes, and I think stuff like that, or even maybe having like a Facebook page for the Friends of the Parks, where we're like, today is National Go Out and Hype Today, or you know what I mean? Or National Pickup Litter Day, where we're going in and we're involving the community in these days.
We can do what we want with it, I mean, obviously within legalities, right? But it's a 501(c)(4), because that, when I checked and looked at what we wanted to do, that's where we fit the best, which is like that community association idea. So the idea is fundraising, the idea is mobilizing volunteers, but I think that idea of advocacy and getting the word out too. Yeah, that's great.
And I mean, I think it also goes into valuing KLVB, because that's just something that breaks my heart to see that people sometimes don't value, and I don't, like, I drive around, these people work the hardest out of anybody in Lago. I have never seen people work so freaking hard before.
Have you seen their yard too?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Thank you. Yeah, I was over there the other day.
At the building? I don't even know where they live.
No, at her house. Well, so I was over there the other day, and we were doing plants, right? And so this is the thing, and she's telling me, you know, I've given my life to this, and, you know, and she's just done so much. And I think also maybe doing something to thank them. I mean, some gesture because...
Or to highlight them for the community.
Just to hi, I mean, oh my gosh. I got my kid out there one time, and his picture was so embarrassing. He was like picking up trash, I'm like, these people do this every day. How dare you make that first?
Anytime I see them, I always honk at them. You're doing a great job. And I was, when the fountain first came, because I'm on Dawn, so I drive home that way every day. And, you know, when we were first doing the city council meetings, and it was brought to, it was supposed to be general fund, okay? That's how it was originally put through from the city manager, that it was coming out of general fund, and even Starr said it came out of general fund, and then all of a sudden, it came out of Chris's fund. But, yeah, the way, the way that it was being presented and stuff, it was kind of like, what are you doing? Because it didn't show the whole thing, and it didn't have really the height, it was just kind of put together, and they were using the guy in Jonestown. And that's another thing, it's like, when you're sitting there badmouthing somebody, somebody's art is out there. And so you're saying, hey, artist, you're not good enough for Lago Vista, and it's like, that guy put in months. And it's like, that guy put in months to that, while being in, and saw, you know, enjoying all that. And now that they're getting it all around, and it's a little path of the rocks, it's beautiful, I love driving home. I'm looking for the lights, I think it's just in the pond area or the, the thing, but it, it's so pretty. I mean, I think.
I just wish people would let us finish, but.
Yeah, right.
This, this must be all going on like on Facebook or something.
It's either way, it's even when you talk to people.
Did we talk about that before, someone, someone's friend was looking at, like, we're considering moving out there, and started reading some of the crap on Facebook or the.
You don't have any businesses we've lost? We've lost so many businesses and investors, people go, why is that empty shopping center empty? Because half the time, they're like, I wanna put a business, and they get on our community board and they go, nope. I don't wanna bet anything.
How do, how are we connecting to that, that, that's, you know, cause and effect?
Because they told me.
Because there's so many things that it.
They told me.
It's an easy excuse.
All the businesses that have.
Well, the investors that I've talked to, I'm just saying, from the investors that I've talked to, that I've had business meetings with, I had somebody that was gonna put a huge wedding venue out here, and it was, that was the determining factor.
Two things, one, one, I just wanna caution you to make sure you stay within,
Yeah.
within your agenda items, so we don't get,
Right.
stray, stray too far. Um, so, and that's number one. But number two, um, as far as KLVB goes, I wonder if there might even be some opportunity there to do some, um, buddying of.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, yeah.
Didn't they tell us?
Certainly Denise knows.
She did, she did, yeah, yeah.
Certainly Denise knows, she has, she came on scope it, um, you know, info, or probably has information, although I don't know, do they have it? 501?
Yes, and they, I know that they can apply for grants.
Yeah, they do.
Um, cause they've received several.
She may just be a good resource then, along with the folks, like the Friends of the Library folks, to get some more information on how to do those things, and, to your point, I mean, they're out there doing stuff all the time, moving rocks between the area around the, the water.
Yeah.
Oh, on that hillside.
Her, her, yeah, her and her husband were working the boat shop there.
Any park or amenity we work with, I would love to partner with them, and we even help fund buying the plants or whatnot and.
They have seventeen spots that they're adopted. I can tell you, if we had to do those as the Parks Department, we couldn't do it.
That was something I forgot to ask you about, Chris, when I first started, was that, that, because that was another piece of information that was brand new to me.
Yeah.
Is that if you could give us like, um, um, give us some sort of, um, I don't know, a flow chart or a spreadsheet, or some kind of a thing, that, uh, paper, paperwork, that would denote for us which areas, in a concise manner, which areas KLVB actually takes care of.
Yeah.
Cause that takes it off of your plate, and, and also, um.
They have a meeting tomorrow at two, that Chris is going to, he's sitting in for me, cause I'm having an airport meeting, and I can request those spots, so you can see those.
Just so we can have something to really focus on in this, to see.
I have a question, and maybe I asked this before, um, in regards to money, so when people build here, like builders that come and build a whole bunch of houses, do they have to donate some to green space or park, you know, cause like, in, in the suburbs, the suburb would have,
I think that's actually coming up on an agenda, isn't it?
Would have, would build a park in their neighborhood.
The, 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 yeah, they, they have to, they have to dislure you.
So do they have to give us?
Money or land?
Yeah, I think it depends on what kind of development it is.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier now to do.
And we get it, it goes to the parks?
Yeah, to, to do the land, because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't come out.
But there is.
I mean, that would be less, more, more expensive, I would think that, well, it's all about their priorities, but since land is so expensive now, that if they could, if there was a dollar figure that they could do easier, and write it off easier in their taxes, that if I was the, you know, I, I could see the big, big scenarios where I would rather give money, which would be great for us, as opposed to, uh, land.
Well, sometimes they give up the land though, to, so they don't have to pay the tax on it, you know, it's like, it makes it less tax burden to them.
We've got a lot going on in the city, but we don't have any really big builders.
Right. Right.
I guess the Fire, Firefly?
Firefly.
Firefly is the next biggest, yeah.
That's about the biggest one to come in. A lot of people, so come in and they have twenty thousand houses, and you get some really, really.
And, and theirs is all gonna be private, they've already said that they're not letting regular Lago vistas into that land that they're doing, right?
I think you might have confused it, I think the one you're talking about is.
That was Firefly.
Is the one, um, that they were gonna, that they brought to council recently to, like, a redo of the one down on the end of the.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That one is the one where they were saying, you know, we wanna go five.
Yeah, I, I thought Firefly, he also said that they don't want, cause they're in a, they're gonna be in an HOA over there by themselves, and they didn't know if they wanted to let, they, you know, let others in, so you might have to go back and look at that.
I think it was also brought up, that they would be able to go to the POA.
But your point about getting money and land anywhere we can, that's.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Nichols and dimes add up, and all of a sudden, you can get some things.
Yeah, true.
I mean, just like, if you look at Boggy right now, where they put Boggy and Highland, and look how pretty that is. It started with a little park that Dana and Paul put, donated, you know, and now it's like this little beautiful little la, oasis with benches and plants, and I saw your Chris mowing there the other day, and it's like, even the little new gas station, they have that little corner right on Boggy and Lowman, and they've done that all beautifully.
You guys have that, right?
Yeah.
And the plan on, um, I just talked with Diana and Denise, looks like they're gonna purchase a big, uh, wooden fence, and then they're gonna have a mural that's gonna cover those, uh, those, those boxes around there, so I'm gonna get some art in the.
I love it.
Yeah.
Good.
Diane and I just talked about that, that was art.
Well, you know what's really kinda cool too, is, is if they do a fence, you can do chalk. And you could let people.
The artists.
Yeah, you could let people do chalk, and then it washes away, like after three rains, it will be gone, and then somebody else can chalk.
Cedar Park has, um, their electrical boxes done by different artists, and it's a really, really cool way in a small scale to introduce art. And then Marble Falls has the, and they have this in Austin too, and it's like, what I wanna do before I die wall, and it's chalkboard wall, and it has like a writing prompt. And people go and they write the most beautiful messages and then take selfies in front of it. And so again, and then it's gone, you know, whatever, and it's just, there's some really cool, different like art ideas that maybe once we get further in to the parks projects that we could introduce. But it's such a cheap way to do it, and a lot of the artists here in Lago that I know, they're not selling their paintings. So this would be a great way for them to do like a free donation to Lago and do it for free, and then it would promote their paintings that are just kinda sitting there. Because a lot of them can't do the shows right now because of the pandemic.
And sure, if I remember that, I would have a, a huge, uh, chalk bar.
Oh, cool.
It's gotta have sidewalks.
Right.
Yeah. We thought about doing this for the farmer's market.
Fence, fences work really well.
Donate the money.
Yeah, so keep, keep, put these ideas, when we're just sort of getting on to item three, but, put some of these ideas in your, your plans, right, your vision for whatever property you've taken on, right? I mean, include some of this stuff, why not, as ideas, even if it's a ballpark estimate for what it is, get it in there. It's not like we have, we may not do it right away, but if, that, you think, oh, that would fit great in that park or that area, that would be really.
And that would, that would fulfill the council, what, uh, that was mentioned from the council, at several points about, well, there was never any proposal to do anything with X or Y, you know, so at least this way it's something on paper that, hey, there's a.
Well, you guys are following exactly what it was, this is our plan, we're gonna present it to council, we're gonna, you know, you look at, I looked before I came in, what we're supposed to do, this is what we're supposed to do as an, as an advisory council.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm very happy with the direction that you guys are going in that. And you're, you're one step closer to doing, the, the last thing that we should do is to create a, a Parks Master Plan. Cause we're already picking up parks and saying, these are the things we want in, that's what, that's what a master plan is.
Yeah, all right, so before we move on from item two, we have, um, citizens here, and typically, we just allow at least three minutes, or up to three minutes for you guys to chat, but before we go further, in case you guys don't wanna stay for the full meeting, but you're welcome to. If you wanna just introduce yourselves and let us know, I think, Salima, you had invited them to come and chat with us.
Well, I didn't prepare anything to say.
Oh, that's okay, yeah, I thought, yeah, do you wanna introduce what you guys are talking about?
No.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm in Rolling Hills Church, and we were thinking about starting a community garden. But I'm, I know nothing about gardening, and so, and especially on a big scale, like a community garden. So I talked to Selena about it, she invited me tonight, that, that you guys were sort of talking about a community garden. And so I'd like to be in on the educational learning part of that, so that I could take it back to my church, and maybe we can do one there.
Oh, cool.
And so they're thinking about doing one, kinda if I can, is it okay if I speak on what we talked about at the market? So they were thinking about doing one that could be part for the community and part for the church, where they wanted to kind of enrich the community as well, and I know that's something that we had talked about a couple meetings ago, is maybe finding somebody that had already had plans to do a community garden, and kind of teaming up with them, so we could get a, a easy win
Right.
on the books, and I also think that this might be a little bit better in the idea of a successful community garden than Sunset, because it's in the heart of Lago.
Yeah.
Close to the elementary school.
Do you guys have area for it near the church there, or another spot?
A lot of land.
So I was gonna go out and walk it with them.
Look, look over the different areas, but it would.
And see how far water.
Hire some clearing, but we have some flat cleared areas that are easily acceptable to, to water from, um.
And that was a big thing too, was the water, because no matter where we picked, even that spot on Bonanza, the biggest issue even along the way, they always said was getting water to it.
Right.
And I think that a lot of times, people say, I want a community garden, they don't realize that the water might be the most expensive part, especially at some place, it's a blank canvas, that's just an empty lot somewhere.
Right.
And so I thought that maybe, um, we can go look at it, if anybody wants to come with me, and just kinda get a feel of it. But I thought again, that it might be a beautiful way for us to team up with the church, I know they have a really big youth program, maybe we could get the kids involved.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you when we were out, the other day, Diane and I were looking around, I wonder, is the school's garden getting destroyed with the construction?
No, it is destroyed, they, they, they put up this.
I know it's part of like their curriculum.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so what happened was, because the, the, cause I live across the street from it, it's beautiful right now. So they're building the two-story on there, so they have to make a bigger pond for the runoff. And so the team came through and put the big fence, well, it was harvest time, and so they've told them they can't go in there, but their compost thing is in there, they needed to clear it first, it's kinda like that weird construction thing that somebody comes in and tells you, this is construction dome, don't come in.
Well, I just wondered if they could use the.
Yeah, although Oakwood was ready to be picked, it's way over, you know, time, and everybody was saying, it's, it's a lot.
KLVB also put in a really beautiful garden for the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's just absolutely gorgeous, kind of in the middle of a courtyard. And then also, this is something that we could talk to the middle school about, I don't know how many people know this, but, um, the middle school has a fantastic greenhouse, just a fantastic greenhouse.
Oh, it's kind of behind the, um.
It's kind of, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen the roof of it.
And it's been something that everybody's like, can you please help us, and so maybe that's something that we could tie in to the community garden. That's what I'm saying, if we have pieces of the puzzle, different places, and we could just kinda team everybody up, and kinda just turn the pieces we already have into an existing functioning project, that might be the cheapest way for us to do it, and then all of us.
If we can get the manpower, that's what it always is, people live to do it.
And, and it is about the, the, the community garden, they should be spaced out, you know, because it's like that way, people come from the communities.
And that's what we talked to them, I talked to them about.
Are you familiar with the Hill Country Ministries, um, with their garden program, cause that sounds like, exactly like what you guys would like to do.
Yeah, and that's what I talked to them about, is we could go to, my dad's church does it in South Austin too, Southwest Christian, where they grow part of it and part of it's for the people of the church, and then they share part of it with the community, but they also rent part of it out to people at a discounted price, or for free if they upkeep it. But it's kinda like I told them, right, the biggest issue with the community garden, and my biggest fear if we just have one in Sunset Park, is that who's gonna drive, the first month, everybody's gonna be there, the second month, three quarters of the people are gonna be there, as soon as summer hits, nobody's gonna be there, and then I'm gonna be out there going like, hey, guys, I'm gonna help you spell some words before we get on the community board.
That was on my mind too.
Yeah, so if we had little pocket community gardens where it was accessible for that group, and then like down off Boggy, you know what I mean? Those people aren't gonna drive over here to community garden, we need another one down there, and if we had like four or five.
And get with the ISDs.
And we get with the ISD, the Boy Scouts could help, but it's, but a lot of the stuff that we need, we already have, it's just not being used.
Does the middle school use that?
They don't use it, they don't use it.
Wow, really?
Cause I wonder if you could even.
Yeah, I didn't even know it was there.
And then at the high school, we have amazing like welding classes, and they have a flower department.
But for the high school, that we should, we could maybe utilize them for things at the park, because I've had friends that have had tables made. Like their, their shop classes wanna make.
They, they did ours.
The Boy Scouts too.
They did ours for our park and our little garden area at my.
Chris and I were talking about the high school with regard to, uh, uh, re- renovating the, the DuHickey out here, the stand, the black one out here.
Oh, my gosh, that stage.
It was not, yeah, it's because, it's, it's dangerous, the unevenness of it, and, yeah.
You should've seen us try to get dance kids on that to perform, I was like, this is just.
No, yeah, it's too big.
Don't talk too hard, girls.
It's a, but that's something that I would think that that's, that is an, an easy connect, and persons that have been talked about in the past, but that, that's just such an easy connect to me.
Or maybe just having a meeting and asking them.
As the teacher, as the principal of the teacher.
Because we have the shop, and then there's also an agriculture class, that's, they're teaching agriculture, so again, maybe we, maybe we don't even have to do the work, guys, maybe we just invite all the people to sit at the table, and we say, Rolling Hills says we can have it, these kids over here have young backs, and they can build it.
Okay, yeah.
You know what I mean, and we just kinda connect the pieces of all the, everything's just kinda laying around in different sections of Lago. So maybe we can just kinda be the glue that connects all the pieces.
That'd be cool.
And then once we get some wins.
That's a pretty easy, not expensive thing to get going, you know, they, they're backing, they're helping.
Right, yeah.
And for people to see, a lot of people would see it all the time, and it's Christmas time.
And then we could use that as a selling point for more donations for the next community garden. Once we have one and people can see what it is, they're gonna go, ooh, I want that in my neighborhood, I'm gonna donate to the Friends of the Park.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And there's another option, I was thinking about, we, this is maybe in number three, we haven't moved to number.
Yeah, let's, let's finish this up first, cause what I wanna know is what's like next steps, and we have to be careful, like I think if two of us are doing something together, but.
I think, yeah, there's a quorum makes, yeah.
So we gotta be mindful of that.
Three, I think it's three, I think it's three.
So, yeah, I would love to.
Maybe we could go in, in couples, we'll go in pairs, um, but I think it'd be interesting to see.
It's kinda hard to go as a big group too.
But also, like I said, the water is such a huge get, and then, um, just once we have one little win in this department, I think all the other funding and everybody's gonna kinda see that we're not crazy, but again, this is one of the big things on the community board that I feel like if we could just say, look, we, it's a lot cheaper than a dog park.
Here's the deal that I'll suggest, is when we're, we're putting these recommendations together that we're all working on, right, on the city-owned properties, that maybe we include this. Like, here's this great opportunity to do a community garden, and put, pull this together as our little project and the component pieces, and here's how it would work, and look how cost-effective it is for the city, just put in a little money, or if something will help raise.
And then the other idea is, maybe this church is just the beginning, cause there's some other great churches, and maybe they're like, you know, maybe St. Mary's wants one, and maybe the Episcopal Church one. I mean, I'm all for gardening for Jesus, and if we could partner up, you know what I mean, and they have land and they have water close by, cause they already have the church facilities, maybe that's another way that we could say, okay, we got this good partnership, we accomplished that, and then let's use it to reach out to the other churches and say, you know, let's do what we can do together.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the churches have, they already have like the, um, St. Mary's to help people in need, so they would already have those people, so we're kind of.
That's true, yeah, we'll benefit from it. Okay, so does that sound good?
More than I expected. I will call you soon after the phone number, and we'll meet.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, and you have Chris's number too?
Yes.
Yeah, let me know, cause I could, I would love to go with you guys and see, cause, yeah, I think we include that with those specific recommendations that we wanna present, you know, pulled together. It's what we wanna do, we need to submit it by January, and present it in January, submit it in December, present it in January, whatever, so we still have a couple months to pull all the pieces together and how we would do it.
Yeah, and get ready for spring.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And the greenhouse, I mean, the greenhouse.
And I would like to just see what shape it is.
For the seedlings and doing, we would just beka it and.
Yeah, I know, I didn't even know.
And if we could get a spot that we could put supplies, cause I'm back in business again, and I am coming up with so many supplies that I wish.
Girl, I have farms, I have twenty-five acres of farm supply, stop now.
I could put to somebody. I mean, I've got funny stuff, I've got PVC, I've got all sorts of stuff.
All right, let's get it back together first, um.
What are we doing, three?
Not to quash your guys' enthusiasm, but, but, we have a meeting to get through, um, all right, item three, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be careful driving.
Yeah, please be careful in the rain.
It's pretty pretty block out there.
All right, item three, progress updates and property analysis and options, um, let me hand out you guys my little thing that I literally put together quickly, so don't laugh at the.
We never met as a team.
The crappy graphics.
I've got, I've got a little weird news about this over here, so.
Chris and Shalane, if you guys would like to look, I'm sorry?
None of us have anything, this is good.
Oh, thank you.
Now I know what to.
Um, just, yeah, cause we said, let's have an example, and because Chris, and Chris and I, and obviously you guys who've seen it are excited about the opportunity at this Dawn Circle property.
Yeah, very cool.
Is, I thought what we could do for each analysis, right, is at a minimum, give a little story, right, introduce it, give the story to the property.[1773.91] Um put the legal, the other thing you might include that I haven't is if it's on the city owned property list, that PDF that you guys have. And they have the map and stuff, maybe include that page too, just so they, gives them point of reference that here's where this is located.
Right.
And then, so for the Dawn Circle, I mean, we talked like, put a trail in with benches, put a gazebo down in there where you've got the views of the lake, put in picnic tables under that shaded area in the middle and put a playscape there. And then we talked about it, do we need a fence or not? Cause it's on the road, probably not, cause you're far enough back, but then, you know, if we get KLVB to come in and do some border type of hedge or plants or whatnot, that would look really nice.
I think that's really small.
Just so people know like what this is, this is our our area and this is private, you know, just to, I think it helps to have that visual.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, and signage, right? I didn't put a sign on here, so let me make a note of that signage. I don't know how much it costs the city to get their signage, you know, I'll put a borders, right? So this is still work in progress, but what I did is phased it, cause in my mind, it's not that cost costly to get something going there going into twenty twenty-two, right? Like they, Chris and Chris have already started clearing in there um and cleaning out the shaded areas and stuff. So the idea of put the trail in, get some benches out there and put some picnic tables in the shaded area, that's not gonna cost that much money and that stuff we could do relatively quickly and people could start using the park. And then later on, add the playscape, add the gazebo. Uh and they, these could even be targeted donation items. We could say, hey, we wanna add a gazebo in this park.
We're gonna put your plaque on it.
And the playscape, if we're still talking about it being like we were talking previously, a a toddler playscape, that's that's something that I think could very readily with.
Especially by those compartments and stuff.
Monetary support for.
Right.
If it's that.
Could add to phase one if you wanna clear that, clear the trees so as you're driving up Dawn Drive, you can see the lake. And that's what will get people.
Yeah, sold on it.
Yeah.
All right, I'll get some costing.
Oh, I was having, I was just referring to, that's, yeah, that's a separate sort of thing.
As long as they're only cedars. No oaks, right? No, no clearing any oaks.
There's a brand new one that just bought a park. It's small, it's cute. They have a new little.
Yeah, I wanna go see, tell me about that. I wanna go see.
It's got, Joseph's come a long way.
Yeah, I was the other day.
So I'll get your estimate on that. So what you can do is ping Chris if you need help with estimates, like, cause he knows, he can rattle off the top of his head some of this stuff. But if you've got uh options and ideas for your property or properties, ping Chris if you need help. If you, if like on the community gardens, obviously Salim is our expert, right? Just think about those things um that lot right there behind the PD, like if we put an amphitheater in there, we'd have to cost that out, but just what I did is just let's get ballparks of stuff and just show and maybe a phased approach, right?
Yeah, I like this. This is awesome.
And then do your picture and then again, don't laugh at this, but I'll try to do a better graphic, but what I wanted to show is on the picture that Chris gave us last time. Um here's the driveway and parking, so that's already there. We don't have to reconfigure that. We'd have the playscape and picnic tables, the trail around the property, the gazebo with a view, you know, just to give an idea of here's just simple stuff we could do on this property to make it completely usable and a really nice place for people to come and play, bring the kids or walk the dogs or whatnot, so. So again, this is really rough, but that's the idea is tell the story behind the property. Here's your vision for it. Here's what it's gonna cost, you know, in terms of what we, how we think we could use it. You may have a couple different options for it, or you may say, we think this is what we should do and here's the cost and let's get real specific on it. And I think our recommendations have a lot more power, cause we've done a lot of the the visioning and the pricing out of this stuff to to help city council make, you know, some decisions, so. So it makes sense? I I don't know if you guys were, wanted to talk about some of the ones you've looked at already and some thoughts you had on.
Well, I don't think we're ever getting the property behind the police station. It's now become the dump. And uh if they keep doing that and they keep moving the land, they're they're changing the top topography of the land by how much dozing they're doing over there. And from what I know, and I don't know if Shalane knows, but that's probably gonna become part of some type of municipal complex, I think. I don't think the city is willing to give it up to us.
Well, Chris mentioned that the PD is gonna expand back in there, right?
Well, PD was, wanted a a park, at at one point, and this was when Josh was here, they were insisting on a parking lot and a pad for the helicopter. Once I talked to Danny, uh he said he doesn't need a parking lot because his guys are on shift work and he never fills this parking lot. He said, you know, if anything, he could either go up or back or whatever, but the the land has a definite runoff problem. It runs into my property, so this is how I know. It has a definite runoff property and there's actually a stream at the bottom of it, so whatever goes there, you can't just cement the whole thing. And it was, it was six acres of trees, you know, and now it's 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 crud trees. So, but the thing is, whatever goes in there, I'm hoping they take into dark skies. Because it's, how they wanted to do it, it was just gonna light it up like a car lot. And that's my bedroom window, you know, that's what I would have been looking at. And that's what I was protesting and the noise. And and so I really think, I personally, if if they put a city hall building there and did it properly, it would be amazing. It would simply be amazing with, I mean, if you think about Lago, the most beautiful building that we own is the police station. You know, and and it's like nothing is cohesive. It's like nothing says a story. Every, you know, the police station's this way, the library's this way, and then this building is, looks like it's temporary from nineteen sixty, you know? And to me, that doesn't say, hey, we're a growing city. Look at us, you know, come be part of the city. We're we're so eh, you know, but to me, if they put the police station and then they had the courthouse, you would you would have that cohesiveness coming around and then the library and then do something else, a senior center with this. We have seniors out here that nobody even knows about. And if we had, I mean, there's senior centers in towns that have three thousand people. We're big and we're, and this is what Lago is now up in the eighties and nineties. A lot of those seniors are all alone, eighty and ninety. If we could have a senior center in part of this building, that'd be fantastic, right next to the library, community building, blah, 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 police station. And bring it around and then do those two lots that are out in front, something that's cool. Something like the food park or or uh uh the wet pad or whatever that's called, you know?
Yeah.
To to bring like people in as the vision that everybody had of this.
Be on the next council meeting, one of the agenda items is to talk about what the the plan is for the city. Um because the plan before was e- expanding into the library in the city hall. And they've had a couple of the council, council people in the group have been working on a plan for what to do, and I believe that's one of the agenda items next next Thursday, so you might wanna tune in and see what they're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
I heard Tracy mention that the other night.
Just identify some potential places where we could get, where we could put some kind of park activity.
Mm hmm.
I think that's why the police.
Yeah, but is it worth us even recommending on that now or?
Would be up to you guys to.
I mean, I, I agree, the city says, yes, we're gonna build this beautiful new city hall municipal court building on the top part of that, and you could probably still maintain green space below it, the trails and benches and whatnot there.
Uh the um elderly center, what did you call it?
Senior center.
Center, went out of my mind. This, in this building, you know, this building doesn't have to be raised. And then when they, if they change, if they fix the parking lot and like with the original plan was to bury the the thing.
Cables.
Cables and then would open up this whole parking area for the market.
The whole idea was just put dibs in on places if we want them, but if we decide that that isn't it, well then we'll we'll put a div in someplace else.
Well, given, so after years of swimming upstream on everything, every single thing we wanted to get, you know, I'd rather cut loose on it if, and but in my mind, you know, it just, it maddens me that they, first, let's put a green center there. I don't know whose idea was that. And now it's like, let's make it a dump. I mean, it's a beautiful property, so why, right in the middle of town, right? This is supposed to be our municipal center or town center.
Any of the conversations or anything about what they're doing. I just know Thursday and Friday and Saturday, that's where they're gonna do the.
There there's enough, there's enough bins out there to bury this whole town in, out there.
They don't take those somewhere else? They leave it all there?
We.
They've been burning stuff.
Yeah, we we have property on Alfalfa that's supposed to be for this, but I guess, and it's gonna be a cluster up here. It was last time. It it's pretty bad, cause there's nowhere for the traffic to go, so.
I don't think it'd be as bad as last time, because there was a lot of, lot of limbs and stuff down.
Yeah, so.
Okay, Shalane, what, do you, what is your knowledge of the, what the plans are for this? Have you guys discussed it at all yet in any detail?
No, it hasn't come to the court council yet.
But who decides what's getting done over there? Is it just city, the city manager saying, yeah, go ahead and continue using it for now?
The city manager and the city council, yeah.
Okay.
And I don't even know that that would need to come to the city council. I think it would depend on ultimately what the plan for it will be, if it's gonna require some sort of, you know, big city funding. Well, yes, it would come to the city council through the budget process, but I don't think I might be mistaken, but I don't think they have to have city council's approval. I think that is a decision.
You just need to approve the budget.
Right.
Now, is there a committee working on, we're supposed to be updating the master plan for the city, right? It, I I mean, are they actively looking at that or, I mean, part of it for me is what's the overall plan? It supersedes what we can cover in parks, right? It's kind of this, even this town center thing.
Budget or anybody looking into actually a master plan, the a master plan for the city. But what you're doing here, starting the master plan for the parks department, when you're saying these are, th- these, this is property and these are some of the amenities that we think that that they need, that that drive, that doesn't drive that.
If, we don't wanna put a bunch of work in and then.
I I, you're right, for nothing. I think the um Diane's uh husband Paul is on the economic. If you go back and watch any of the meetings, which have been really interesting lately, even the library did theirs the other day and Tracy came and they were talking about the library. The labor, library does not want a two story building, so each meeting has little pieces of meat in it, if you watch them. And then the economic advisory committee, the other day Tracy came into them and they said that, you know, it was like seven hundred and seven fifty that was supposed to be for the library, but they bumped that up to a million dollars. But it's also a million dollars that could be set on temporary building and then putting a lot of it to what needs to be done for the municipal complex. So that's on the twenty first, she said. So this twenty first meeting is probably gonna be a doozy, cause they didn't have any meetings this month.
Okay, well, I guess without putting too much work into it, we could still make a recommendation. So if they ultimately decide not to go that route, we're saying, well, don't just use it as a dump or
Right.
Parking lot, it's a great property, so.
A- and it does go, I mean, you've been out on it, Chris, haven't you? It it's got this flat area and see, that's where I had thought at first a splash pad would have been really cool, cause it would have sat and it would have been down in, you know, the little sea, so little kids, you won't have to worry about that, you know? And then as it goes down, you could have put like, you know, off the splash pad, that any of the water that came down onto it into a garden area and then put trails as it went down even further and really used all the property. Cause it it was a really pretty, pretty, my part, little park, if anyone ever wants to come to my condo, we have the little park that's next to my condo and it's all these beautiful oaks. And it and it gets the water and it's always green and it's like my little piece of oasis, you know, and and nobody can ever do anything with it, cause we own it. But as you look over the fence, now it's become the the eyesore of the neighbor and the neighbor's my city, you know, and it's like, so that's where I got involved in this, so.
Okay, gotcha.
So one thing that came up in the past, I don't know, maybe week and a half or two weeks, that a lot of people are talking about is they want like their, like the city owned food truck park. I don't know if anybody's been following what's been going on at our food truck park. It's been years of a mess, but basically we've lost almost all of our businesses there. When it was once really thriving and hopping and now it's just kind of like hit or miss and it's kind of, you know, it's always been kind of a rundown issue with the property and whatever, and the city and the owner or whatever. But what was brought up, and they're wanting to start a petition for it, and I said, let me go ahead and just put a a B and R bonnet before they, and I told them, you know, if you wanna start a petition, whatever, but they would like the city to have like a food truck park. That's city owned. And maybe that's something that we could tie in with kids, because a lot of places like um Cedar Park and Leander have food truck parks and then they have like a playground on the side and it's a whole functioning park. And then the parents can eat or whatever. I mean, you could even tie it in with your idea of the amphitheater, you know what I mean? And tie it in. And so you're supporting small business, right? Which is one great thing that I'm grateful for the city is they supported my small business when I didn't have anywhere to go and gave me an affordable rent. So they could pay that on to other businesses and maybe they could, you know, and that money could go back into that they're paying for rent to the parks.
That'd be.
And then we would have a way.
And you could watch the airport and while you're eating, you know?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that this this over here by the city hall by any means, but this is just something that just like the past week and a half came across my plate.
Petition. Tell them to do.
And that's what I did. I said, do a petition. I can't have anything to do with it, but if you would like to set up at the farmer's market, I let anybody set up for free that's involved in that kind of stuff.
Again, that's another part of the, a master plan for the parks. Like I said, you're starting to develop.
Yeah.
Someplace like a food, a food truck court, I think, just two, like two bits, that little square in between those two buildings that that's the city, that would be, as opposed to a children's playground close to the traffic.
Originally Chris's, I mean, sorry, no, um.
Josh.
Josh's plan.
The food truck court there would, and that would, it would, it would go in flowing together with whatever is in 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 front of the place department and the senior center.
You would be kind of limited on how many food trucks you could put there. It'd be a pretty tight fit.
Be a whole lot more food trucks than there is over here, you know, there's, there's a lot of room for.
You could do a minute here.
I don't know if, I mean, really, if you look at those two lots, and I've looked at those two lots, you might be able to fit fit four food trucks on there.
Oh, no, I think more than that. But that's a whole other thing.
But but, but. Do more than one though, right?
You could do more than one and it's better than, but what I'm saying is, look at our options. We have all this land. Let's just look at our options. Maybe that's something.
Like that's just something throwing out there. That's all.
I'm just.
Well, what, no one took the plot of land, so I was just gonna put a few ideas together, but if you guys have thoughts on that between the mark and the POA building?
Yeah.
And there's two. There's actually two plots right there. They have to put them in as one lot. They've never done that yet. They were actually two separate lots. Yeah, they need to be replanted.
Yeah, okay.
And that's on the city.
So what's the, what's the plan now with this piece of land between the library and city hall? Because when Josh was here, he had this great idea and there was gonna be like a stage and.
I think you'll get that answer Thursday, the council meeting.
Okay, cool.
Cause you know, I haven't been in on the conversation, but.
Okay.
It's been Paul and Kevin.
To me too, because they're gonna, they would possibly move my office and you see in my office, it's like jail cell. About forty-eight square feet, so um so that would have something to do with me too, but they they had all those discussions. I think they're gonna come up with, these are some of our ideas and here's some of the costs to do that.
Oh, okay.
Cause I've heard rumors about things, but rumors, you got to wait till they figure it out.
Yeah, cause we didn't assign this out to anyone.
No, we talked about it too. Like if you could make some sort of maybe extension to the library where people could sit and read or.
Out there reading.
Yeah, just any, or like, there's a lot of art at the library, what if the artists also, yeah, type stuff out there. Because I know they already have people that display stuff.
For a smaller playground too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it.
It's so much cooler in the summer.
That's one of the first pieces of property we're gonna take care of, so you can start to see what you have.
And Jan is.
A little bigger than you think.
Jan's open to to our suggestions and everybody's suggestions. I've talked to her quite a few times over at the library. And she's glad that people are are paying attention with what's going on with them too now.
Outside, like in the summers, they cram that space with.
Mm hmm.
Have it outside?
Yeah, they could do.
Yeah, that's a greater do.
They could do lots of.
Lots of stuff.
Okay, well, I'll try.
Reading under the trees, picnic blankets, you know?
You say Thursday, you mean tomorrow night or next week?
That's the twenty first.
Twenty first, okay.
Yeah.
That might be another piece of property when you say, we we could possibly put these types of activities on there and we put a dollar figure to it and then we put on to the next one.
Yeah.
You keep, you keep just putting dibs on things until you get something.
Well, so do you.
Remember, this this was driven be, driven because we didn't know about the Bonanza property.
Yeah, right.
And and these other things, so and part of our charge is to do this.
And and Bonanza hasn't gave up on yet, right? They never voted on that yet, so it's it's in limbo right now.
Oh, I thought that.
So, but but it's still looking good. But I I was listening to all of it. It still looks good, cause even the buyer was saying he didn't.
Scratch it off my list. Should I unscratch it? Unscratch?
Unscratch it.
Yeah, even even the buyer was saying that he 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 didn't know the community wanted it so bad, so.
Who, you guys, who's got Bonanza though?
It it got scratched off the list.
Diana and Deanna.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good. This is an older list. All right, so I, no one took the area between city hall and the library, but if you guys have ideas for it, same thing was between the mark and the POA building. Just if you guys have ideas for it, put them together, cause we'll pull that into.
And and what about the little, just, it's all rock right now as you come into the driveway as it's facing the police station?[1764.41] I mean, I was thinking maybe get L V, you know, out there, because it's all just gravel. I think it's part.
That's really, really small.
But just something with a tree or a bench, it's just, right now, it's just that white stone.
I don't know if that's P O As or ours, do you?
Where is this?
It's just right here as you're coming into the parking lot, it's part that divides the P O A from us.
No, part of it, I think most of it's city, but Andrew and those guys maintain it, like they redid the planters that are there and they mow, so I think on the side of our building to the street is us, but I'm not sure about the planters that are in the back.
In that round circle, because I've seen L V, keep Lago Vista Beautiful, out there doing some things too, and they did some more things right next to the library, but it's just, right now, it's just white rock. And it's just not very becoming as you come into this area, you know? Maybe a couple trees and a bench, I mean, that's all it really needs, a couple trees and a bench.
I don't know, I'll check and see how, where the P O A property ends. I mean, the whole, even getting the parking lot redone, you know, it's taking forever, but. Um, all right, so you guys feel like you've got what you need for your assignments or your, what you've fallen here for?
I don't think I've volunteered for any of this.
So, the plan is, as much as possible for our November meeting, come back, even if you don't have your thing fully done, but if you now got thoughts that we can discuss, um, and then I'd say by, definitely for the December meeting, assuming we have one, I mean, we're scheduled to have one, um.
Are y'all presenting in January to the council, is that what it was?
I think so, because it would be, our report would be due in January, present in January. Because if we can get all it pulled together by early December and have time to pull the report together and you guys review it and we make sure we're okay with it, because I think for our December meeting, we might want to review it and have an actual vote, like our action item is, yes, this is a recommendation we want to present for our.
And then it wouldn't even go into the budget until the next budget cycle.
But what you really have a chance to capitalize on is three brand new windows.
Right.
Right.
So, the only thing I'll mention is that with the recent changes that were approved by the city council to the rules of procedure, you're no longer required to present twice per year to the city council, you're required only once.
Okay.
You can ask, certainly, any, at any point in time, I would think, to, to present to the council, but you are not required to do so. So, if you'd like to present to the council again in December or January, we can request.
Okay, but is the timing of the once a year gonna be like the June timeframe still, or they're gonna do it?
I do believe, I was just trying to find my copy of it, um, I, I do believe it is scheduled for the summer.
Okay.
Library is doing theirs in January, they just discussed that at their meeting, they're gonna do.
I'll need to look at the rules of procedure to see if it specifies like a month, or if it just says annually.
Or it just says once a year. Well, we want to keep to January, because one reason we're pushing to do this now and we socialize it with city council in the July meeting is, um, it's time sensitive, right? Because if they decide, let's go ahead and sell these properties, then we lose potential green space.
Well, y'all put a lot of good work into this, I, I can see a very good report to council on this.
I just didn't want you to feel like you had to present twice per year, so then, after that, you know, again, we can certainly ask to be put on the agenda at any point in time.
Right.
But your requirement would be at least once per year.
Okay, and my, I guess I have a few questions on what you recommend is processed, and if you say this is a better conversation offline, let me know, but we may come back and say, here's our recommendations, like we promised, yay, and here's the properties we want you not to sell.
Here's the plan, let's put it there.
Here's the plan, here's what we're recommending, some is very cost-effective, we could get going on immediately, others maybe take more money, has to be budgeted, blah, blah, blah. What is our best approach within city council? Do we request a resolution that, they make a resolution that they won't sell these city properties? I, I mean, what's the best way to proceed?
So, I think that, I don't know, the answer to that question, um, is I, I don't currently know. Because this committee is, is not a, a committee that has decision-making authority, it's an advisory committee. So, anything that you put in front of city council as recommendations would require some sort of action on the part of the city council, should they choose to take that action. So, I don't, I don't know what that process would be. Because technically, since our, our committee is advisory, they don't have to do anything with the information.
Right.
But I can, I can investigate, I don't know if the right person to ask on that would be Tracy? As the city manager, or if it would be Aaron as the city attorney?
Aaron, maybe.
Maybe Aaron.
But I can, I can, you know, ask the question.
Okay, I mean, we might present in one meeting and then, between that and the next, maybe a month later or the next meeting even, request a resolution, which we'd have to probably work with Aaron to draw up anyways, like setting aside these properties, like I would imagine it would take some discussion even amongst city council to say, okay, you guys analyzed whatever the number ends up being, eight or ten properties, and we think, yeah, these five sound great, and they'll agree to put that land aside, they're not even budgeting monies yet, they're just saying, yes, we will not sell these properties, because that's kind of job one for us, is to like, don't sell this stuff, because the city's gonna want to use this for parks.
Because you're talking about properties that are not currently zoned parks, right? Because if they're currently zoned parks, then, um, I mean, I guess they could sell any property, the city can sell.
Well, Bonanza.
Bonanza.
I think we would just look.
Don't get it going there.
We were just looking at city-owned property.
Yeah, so, it could be properties that are zoned parks or not zoned.
Right.
Right.
Absolutely.
And I think.
So, the other thing to do, then, what we would need to find out is, if the city is open to that, would there need to be some sort of a zoning change for the ones that are already zoned parks, to zone them parks? Because that goes into the, uh, future land use, land, not use now. But this is all information that we probably need to get more information on.
And also.
It could even be, I'm sorry, it could even be that, that a member of the committee might be tasked to, as one of, instead of, in place of a property, to say, look, why don't the two of you communicate or see what you can investigate or research with Tracy and Aaron, however you guys want to handle that, because it's probably more than a quick five-minute conversation.
Right, yeah.
I think our thing was just tap the brakes a little bit before you sell any property, or at least let, I think as Darnell said, at least let us know if it was zoned, zoned parks, we have a little bit of a say in it. So, I think, I think you've accomplished that, so.
I mean, I think when we go to city council, like, I think they've probably never even considered, they just probably haven't sat and thought, oh, we could put art out, like, we can, I mean, it's kind of a thought.
They put minimal thought into it.
Yeah, and so I think if we're even just suggesting it, they'll, even just letting them think about it, even if they don't know exactly where and exactly what it is, yeah, at least they'll think, okay, yeah, we do need those, because there's green space.
And, and part of your support, A L V B and some of these other groups that you've talked about and.
Right, yeah.
Is to get other groups to, to, to.
Because, yeah, because this is kind of job one, is don't sell the properties and do some kind of resolution or whatever the mechanism is to say, yep, these are off the market, we're, we're gonna put these aside for green belts or parks.
Or at least have a conversation with parks about it.
But then job number two is like Chris said, is in going into next year, we'll put together our master plan and all this obviously feeds in, it'll be the bulk of the master plan, but we could even tie it into the twenty thirty plan and the town center, municipal center idea.
But you're getting, you're getting your, when you're putting the dollars in, you're getting your dibs in early on about, in the budget process, about what this possibly might be.
Better to have a, have a detail in there than to have it a blank, have a blank spot.
And I believe once the land, because I was listening at another meeting about this, once the land is divved into parks, it comes off in tax, the property tax drops significantly, if not to zero. So, I mean, that might be something that the city would be interested in, is pulling it just to a park, because, you know, that's what the churches were saying, if the churches were saying that they just put in that new little park, once they deemed it parked, they didn't have to pay property tax on it. So, I don't know how Texas works with that, but that is something I heard at a meeting, so.
The city does have to pay property tax.
Yeah, and everything they own.
I would think they did.
But if it goes to park, it has a different, a different cost.
That would be, worrying about money, that would be, uh, that would be something. One other point I wanted to bring, if we're in, think about options, is, and visibility and networking and, uh, uh, garnering support and such, is to use our, the areas around town that are public information areas, like next, I don't know them all, I don't profess to know them all, but, and, like, next to the Lowe's grocery store with the community board, where somebody's, I think a small fragment of people see the community, the board and city hall out here. But there are so many areas, like maybe Ace would let us do something to make, to make a little box, a suggestion box or a nice, a nice board, the, the school, that would publicize the parks and recreation and ideas and involvement. I mean, no, no, we can work out the words, but just to put something that's big and visible and pretty in these places where the community generally goes, the grocery store, the pizza thing, up by the nails.
The library.
By Starbucks, by the library, by, by the Ace Hardware, um.
Star, or Sun Hardware, too. And they're, yeah, they're really friendly.
I would say similarly, if there's opportunity, like at the tree lighting, or, you know, those kinds of things, if there was something that we could.
Yeah, start setting up doing things.
Well, it doesn't even, even need to be that expansive, but just a suggestion box that's there, that's obvious, not hidden in the corner. But, you know, you get people involved and, and let them, and, and it helps, because you, we feel like when we're involved, we feel like, oh, it mattered, you know, it mattered.
Yeah.
Almost before involved, that they recognize the group and what it's worth.
That the city cares about it, you know?
Yeah, well, that, I, that's why I like Deanne's idea, like.
Does someone want to take this as an action item? Because Salima mentioned at the farmer's market and being able to advertise there, and then I think that's a great idea, is getting the word out, but to me, it's on the.
I don't think people even realize that we're Parks and Recs commu, like, committee, until like they're on the board and I say, hey, guys, we have a committee and we're talking about a skate park, and if you guys would like to listen in on the meetings, they're all on YouTube and you can go back and listen to.
The dog park. There's a hundred and fifty people on the, on the, on the petition for a dog park, they're gonna present on the, for their three minutes on the twenty-first.
And the city.
Dog park and one of our parks that we're recommending on.
Yeah.
When there's more tugging at the skirt tails, the city count, the city listens, then, you know, they're, they're, uh, uh, it's beholding on them to listen more.
Well, and I think that goes back into what she said about putting it on the political page, it goes back into, this is important for you to remember and to talk about, we want you to talk about parks, we want you to talk about green spaces. Because if you don't in the next year, the next five years, it's gone.
It'll be gone.
Like, I don't think people understand the crucialness of this next couple of years here in Lago, but.
It's the nature of, of people.
You're marking these little places, because once it's gone, it's sold, we're just not gonna get it back.
Right, yes. Yeah.
And then maybe even getting the kids involved, you know, like.
That's what we're talking about, in the high school, getting all these, these things that we've talked about, is to get, getting them involved, the middle school, the high school, the elementary school.
So, they value Lago.
Well, I think the community garden we were talking about is a great way to pilot that, when you pull these.
I think there's so many ideas.
From church, that would be crazy.
I just think it would be easy, so we have the people. I was gonna say, I think it would be easy, we know the church people would take care of it, they're there several times during the week. I mean, it's a great resource, you know?
All right, so we're kind of, this is segueing from three to four, so anything more on three? No, okay, item four, the Lago Vista Friends of the Park, so we're set up, we've got a bank account, we've got PayPal, so I can, I'm building a website, I'm trying to get good photos in, like, Chris, I'm just gonna nudge you again, if you have any good photos, like a Sunset Park, Boden Point, any of the other parks, um, maybe even as Dawn Circles, you guys have done work there, we, anyways, and if you guys have nice photos, you think that either you've taken or you've seen of Lago, because what I'm working on now is setting up the website, um, so then we can get, you know, the donate now button.
I wish it was spring.
But we can take donations now, so even if you have people ready to donate, or you guys are ready to donate, just write a check to Lago Vista Friends of the Park, we've got the account ready to go.
I'm already plugging it.
I opened it, yeah, and start plugging it, absolutely, start plugging it amongst people you know. And then what I'll work on in tandem with the website is a flyer and I'll run it by you guys and, you know, get your feedback, but get a flyer that we can start handing out to people or sending out via email to solicit donations or get people involved.
And it might be good to have a pictures, have pictures, not just of what, what is nice and pretty, but one, one of those, but then three needs passion, it needs, yeah, T L C.
Yeah, but I was just thinking, also, if we, if we decide on something, it'll be like, you're like, what's?
Yeah, this is our current project.
Yeah, like, this is what we want, what's that called, when you, like?
Vision board.
Vision board, yeah, okay.
That's a good idea.
A lot of the parks in Austin, as they're redoing them, they have, like, each park kind of has its own friend group. Peace Park just underwent an amazing overhaul, and it's all, most of their funding was through Friends of Peace Park. And if you, they have a Facebook page and a website and all that, and, I mean, that's a much larger scale than what we're looking at.
Push the Facebook.
But it's just like the pathways, too.
Great ideas of, of ways you can do fundraising and, and things like that, so that's.
Well, you guys get busy with your ideas, first off, get the word out, right? And then, once they have a website out.
We should have had a turkey trot.
A what?
We should have had a turkey trot.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Did you, did you make a Facebook page for it yet?
I'm not doing Facebook, someone else, Facebook is evil, I'm not on Facebook.
I got you.
Play, someone else can do Facebook.
Again, make sure you put the invite part on.
So, Salima's gonna do Facebook.
I'll do Facebook page.
Okay.
I'll handle social media.
We might want to do an Instagram, too, I know it sounds silly, but the, the people from like thirty-five to twenty-five are really into Instagram.
Yep, hashtag it, add it, yeah.
And that way we can have our hashtags and.
It's just visual.
The kids are, too.
It's just, we're out doing our projects and we're taking pictures, because I can give all of y'all the Instagram login, right? So, all of y'all could have it as an option on your phone of which Instagram you're personal or your parks. So, if you're out personally working on your area.
So, you're gonna be our social media maven.
Yes, I'll be your social media maven, um, y'all can all take your pictures and upload it, right? Because what you see is the magical part and what you see, and what you see is all different, and it's, that's what I love about this group, is we're all so different and have great ideas, and I think that each person is gonna resonate with different ideas, so I want people to see all of them, so I think it'd be great if all of us could post on there, when we're out, you know what I mean? Okay, well, I'm working on this project and I see this.
I have three Instagrams.
I'll show you, I'll, I'll show you. Well, y'all can send it to me, I can do it, too.
But start getting the word out and then, um, I'll work on the website, if you guys send me photos that are good, especially of the parks that we do have, website and flyer is what I'll work on next, because I've literally got everything set up, so. And believe me, the website won't be great, I've done websites before, I'm not a technical website person, but it'll be fine to get it started. And if we get, we raise some more money and have some more money, because right now it's a hundred bucks in the account, which is my hundred-dollar bill, because I forgot my checkbook, but.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have a run, okay?
Okay, yeah, do it.
I just made a jingle bell.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a bigger donation into it, so you just have money to pay for the website and all that stuff, but. Yeah, let's do events, yeah, let's do events, whatever.
I, I said, Chris, a great idea, there's a couple towns that do an outdoor roller disco and it's so easy to do. All you need is a parking lot and a DJ, that's it, and then people just skate in a circle.
Uh-uh, yeah, I was just telling Darcy that, that when I was at Robin Blunt's Park the other night, I was like, where is that music coming from? And I drove down, um, Baghdad, and just randomly, like, in this parking lot, there was this bluegrass festival, like, there was cars parked there, and I was like, literally in the middle, there was nothing there.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a park.
It's actually a shelter.
It's a park.
I forget the name of the Leander Bluegrass Festival.
I don't remember what park it is, I can't remember the name of it.
So, we can do the same thing, it's a park.
He has my lead people to it with the.
My friend was like, what, this is tiny, I was like, well, I don't know, but it's been there for a long time.
Yeah.
It's the same thing, like, sometimes we're, how about on Facebook about this event is happening and that event is happening and you can sign up, are you interested or not, and, because I've seen some little things.
So, we can do that on Facebook, like, if you want to do the jingle run, we can make an event on Facebook and start plugging it.
All right, you guys are running it, though.
What is the jingle?
Yeah, no, I'm on Facebook all the time, it's just a fire problem.
But maybe at the farmer's market at some point, at the Christmas.
Well, even if we have flyers, we don't even have to always set up a booth at the farmer's market.
Just the flyer with the.
But I could just have like a part of the farmer's market booth where we have information on parks.
Yeah.
Where everybody that comes up, that's like, I'm new to town, I could say, here you go, let's save our parks, you know what I mean? I think a lot of times, people just don't know until you invite them to the conversation that we want them to.
Absolutely.
And so, everybody's going like, I want to be a part of it, I'm just gonna like, y'all are invited, people want to tell them.
And just so you guys know, and I'll, it'll be on the.
And as a suggestion box in the, in the farmer's market would be just another one of those little signs and suggestions.
We could put it next to the, before we built one, we could do a smaller one.
So, website and flyers, like, for, because you can do.
Like, individual donations, but also I'm gonna set up like membership levels, I've seen that work successfully. So, again, you guys, I'll put it up there and you guys give me feedback, like, oh, that dollar amount doesn't make sense, whatever. I mean, you know what I mean, it'll, it'll be iterative, but I just want to get some stuff done, so you guys can react to it and we'll get it figured out as we go along. So again, you guys, I'll put it up there, and you guys give me feedback, like, oh, that dollar amount doesn't make sense, whatever, I mean, you know what I mean, it'll, it'll be iterative, but I just want to get some stuff done, so you guys can react to it, and we'll get it figured out as we go along.
Well, I think it's important.
Patriot, patriots.
A, like, a business membership, and then also maybe like a family section, like two separate tiers, because what Lance's Lakeside Plumbing might donate is going to be totally different than maybe what a family can donate.
Right, okay.
So I think, you know, that's about that too, because there's some of these businesses that are, I mean, they're blowing up out here, and maybe they want to invest in their community.
But along with that, we have to show that we're doing something. People want to, want to see that their money is going towards something.
That's why I like this, because we could say, okay, with this thousand dollars, we did this chunk of the project, and do a plaque right by it, Lance's Lakeside Plumbing.
Right, yeah.
Less than five thousand.
Okay, and we had a house builder that donated twenty thousand, gazebo by whoever.
Then you pay five dollars for it, right.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, because we'll already have these ideas in front of city council and say, hey, here's what we want to do. Dawn Circle seems like relatively straightforward, hopefully, like, we can start working on that one.
Yeah, everyone can see it, I think that's fun.
But I like this too, because it seems like it's doable, like you said, it's like a chunk, like, small victories, right? We're not waiting for one huge victory, it's like, look, we have this.
And spreading it around.
Yeah, we have these three small victories while we're working on these kind of heavy hard victories.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So I like that, because it kind of gives us a little.
People can start using it and enjoying it, yeah, and then hopefully advocate more for it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Good, okay, well, I'll keep, stick that up to you guys, I know, well, you guys feel free to donate, I'll take your checks tonight, checks, cash.
But we need money. I mean, we got to advocate that too. We don't have money to do it.
We're not set up for Bitcoin yet, maybe we'll explore that later.
I'll let you handle that, that's up in my head.
All right, well, anything else on our items, Shalane, anything else?
As always, a productive meeting.
Yeah, that's right, all right, well, thanks you guys, it was great, good meeting, we'll adjourn our meeting, oh, wait, do I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
I, I have a question though, did, did we, uh, weren't our meetings at six thirty?
She changed it to six.
Okay.
Six.
Because I, I was, I was.
Yeah, because that's why, that's why.
Driving up here so quickly, and then all of a sudden, I was like, it went to six?
This, this, Sandro, reminds you that if you, the three people that are outgoing, if you're interested in staying on, you need to submit an application now.
So who's out, who's out rolling?
I don't even know who's who.
Oh, I'm outgoing, okay.
Who else?
I just, I did just join.
Who's outgoing?
I am.
And, and I hand you your ticket.
I'm outgoing.
I am, because his.
Because you guys chucked someone's seat.
Oh, that's.
So we just need to.
You go on the web, you see when the deadline is.
You have to fill out your application, or you're off the team.
Okay, I'll fill out the application tomorrow, come on, guys, we've waited all this time, and nailed this, we voted, I'll be filling it up, the aisle, we won't even, we'll be coming, and they won't even know that we're voted on. Okay, remind me for sure tomorrow.
No, I'm just going to ask Manny, uh, Diane and Salima.
But tomorrow's Friday, I can't even.
It's Thursday.
Ah, okay.
Yes, if you're interested to do this, then this is an absolute right, very quickly, just to confirm, um, I, I, I didn't change any meeting times, but on our website, the city website
says that the Parks and Recreation Committee meets the second Wednesday of every month at six P M.
Okay.
Yes.
So we have to go by the time that's on the city website.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
However, you all, as a committee, can vote to change that time, you just have to put it on a future agenda.
Ah, okay.
And you guys, as long as you've got a majority vote, change the time, you can do that.
I would love if we could get six thirty, I'm working for myself again, and it's really, I was, I drove from Sun City here.
What, what I would recommend, because we don't have a future agenda meetings topic on the agenda tonight, and because we've already adjourned the meeting.
Wait, I didn't gavel yet, we're still, I didn't gavel yet.
Just motions, just motions.
Just motions, so I.
If you didn't vote?
No.
Oh, okay, if you didn't vote, then you're good, but what you can do is, um, email Karen and say, uh, you know, the next committee meeting, uh, can we put this on the agenda?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, just shoot me an email, I'm making a note.
But only one email, just to Karen.
Yes.
Yeah, don't email the whole group, don't get us in trouble.
Yes.
I do it to everybody, so don't feel like you guys are special.
Well, okay, we'll put it on as a discussion and possible action item next week, next meeting.
I do reply all.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to adjourn, we re-motion again, do you mind?
Remotion to adjourn?
And you're going to have a second to adjourn?
Raise your hand, second.
Second, okay, we are adjourned.
We have to vote, we all vote.
I'll, I'll.
Good night.
All in favor.
We got to vote on something, yeah.
We're adjourning, it's eight forty-one P M.
How many times does it take us to adjourn a meeting?
We finally voted to adjourn.
Can I go to the hospital with my property?
Oh, my God, so old. I guess I'll just do the green box that connects us to the.
Oh, for, you mean our assignments, all right, so I have.
Why do you show up live mic, everyone?
Well, Dawn Circle, just to look at it for community garden space, but it sounds like we have a better option, because I wasn't sure it would be big enough for community gardens. So whatever you want to do, if you want to think about area, because you're there, the farmer's market, the.
Yeah, I can do that, I can do that too.
Yeah, 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 okay.
On the bottom of his arm or something?
Since I'm there all the time.
That would be awesome, yeah, I would love some great ideas for those, because that's part of the municipal center.
Yeah, right now I don't have a computer, but soon as I get it back up, we'll be running.
Okay.
I just was trying to organize.
Let's do it together. Just estimate on it, yeah.
Well, the doctors. All they can say is no. Well, they can do that, if I can. And I'm going to measure that.
Yeah, then you'll know, right?
Because if we could fit five to six.
I think easy to be on.
Let me go measure it though.
I know part of that story, I refuse to go there anymore.
Well, you know, the farmer's market used to be there, and then he.
Or, does it matter where.
Over the food.
He played a role. The farmer's market not being.
Oh, yeah, he was, he got mad at me, I had a meeting with Ed and Josh Ray here, about the farmer's market, and when I walked outside, he was waiting for me in the parking lot.
Doesn't matter where.
Just on the back page, like the last page?
Oh, dude, okay, he said, what did you talk to Ed about? And I said, uh, he was giving me options for the farmer's market, well, you're addicted, because you can't come back. If you talk to Ed about moving the farmer's market, you can't come back, and I'm like, what? That's ridiculous, so then I called Josh and said, um, can I please?
And they were saying it was like, um, apartment syndrome.
Somebody was here, he was waiting, and the apartment mom.
You know, it's a great, great idea.
Like, he didn't fall.
But then it was always switching and changing, and.
Well, the problem is, well, they basically confiscated.
It was like a hard warning. They brought him out.
The, the, this man who had the burger, the burger bus, he basically confiscated it from us.
Didn't stop them. They put him back in.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
And, and, it, it's a whole long story, but, and I don't know all of it, so I can't really repeat it and pass on, but because he was just, it was just like a very bully-ish thing to do, because he could.
It's a mess up there. But, um.
To stop the bleeding.
But that's, that's his whole M O, so he has everybody on month-to-month leases, so anytime.
Yeah, we are still being recorded, we should, yeah, because they've got a, Chris will let them know to turn it off, but it's still, I don't think they do any editing.
Yeah, I thought we adjourned.
We did, but the, it's still being recorded.
Oh.
Do you have those minutes?
Shalane's like, guys.
I mean.
Small whole world.
Thanks for doing this.
Yes, quite necessary, give me the credit.
Did you turn off the recording?
No way, how do you turn them off?
Did you turn off the recording yet?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, now you're turned off, now you can talk.
Yep, I did.
Did you get my phone number, Salima?
No, let me get it so that I can, and then I showed Diane how to know about her phone.
So, yeah, let me know when you schedule with them to go see.
Yeah, I'll let you know, I'll email you.
You and I can go, and Chris can go, and that wouldn't be a quorum.
Yeah, I'll let you know when they contact me, and I'll check with y'all's schedule before I schedule it.
Okay, yeah, that would be awesome.
Because I'm really available.
I love that idea of pulling these different parties together.
She just came up to me and was like, I was told to come talk to you, and I was like, thank you, Jesus.
See, that's how good things, that things get done, because city can't do it all.
Right, yeah.
Hey, she, she had me at water, when she said, oh, we have water, easily, I said, oh, we have.
And relatively flat land.
Just getting the water.
The thing is, you don't even need dirt, you can build the.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're building your boxes.
You need water.
Yeah, exactly.
That's awesome, yeah.
I have pillars, I have irrigation systems, I have gigantic water tanks that we can use to put the wa, I mean, I have twenty-five acres of my farm hoarding, my husband's like, please, get a project, woman. What are you keeping all this stuff for?
Like, you don't already have.
It's a specialized kind of hoarding, farm hoarding.
Yeah, I have more bee equipment than any one person could ever need.
Oh, I need bee equipment, but do you have bees?
I'll bring you one. I sometimes do, I believe, the, my problem is, my farm is off Singleton Bend, so it's by the winery, and I think whatever they put on those grates, pots, colony washes out.
Oh, really?
Oh, wow.
So, it's just, it's just because the bees can travel over five miles, so it's not close to winery, but it's close enough, it's a whole other bee, he hears out, was that airman had issues? So, you never know, you need to be, any of these are, it's heartbreaking, I don't farm anymore as a business, I farm as a potting.
Yeah.
I take my money, and I go burn it all by natural solar. My pigs can go, you can do that.
This is.
Well, it's good to see you guys, that was my day.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Okay, good, but thank you.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, hey, I am really hungry, maybe I'll work up to it for me and my husband. So, yes, but always a good meeting.
Have you heard from your son, he showed off successfully?
So he's in and out, yes, he went out, and then he came back, now he's getting ready to go back out, um, eighteen, I think.
Oh, wow.
And then he'll be out a few weeks, and then he'll come back for a couple weeks, and he'll go back, and then, like, their big performance happens, like. Hi there.
Thank you.
Got something, yeah.
Cool, thanks, Chris.
Oh, you bet.
Is there any way to edit out the last four minutes?
I wish.